Hi guys, welcome to the channel. We have Salt Lake City Council meeting tonight. We'll see if anybody joins us and if not, that's okay. This is just for the record. Oh, a long day. Hey Maine House. It was a great day for an all-day, that's for sure. I think you were the first one this morning too. Crazy day. Still kind of trying to figure out what the hell I want to say. I'm not too sure. Some days it's just like that. I'm gonna pull up the... Pull up what I have in there from before. Oops. I should probably start putting these in their own little files. Let's see what I've said before. No, not that one. Yeah, Salt Lake City has a council meeting. Their council meeting 7:00 PM Mountain Standard Time. They always have theirs in the evening. And you can sign up to speak for their public comment until 7:30 Mountain Standard Time. 9:00 PM Eastern. Ooh, my computer's very hot. I put the, um... Did I put the website in the thing? I don't know, did I? I might not have. I might have screwed that up. Let me go see if I can do that. And of course, my computer has to be, it's the end of the day, hot. I need some rest time. Let me go in and fix my... Fix it, fix it, fix it. Let's turn this on. I'll save that. And we will... I guess putting the, um, agenda in there or the website to do that probably would be a good thing. Silly me. There's the Zoom. Let me pop in the... Salt Lake City. Here is the website to go on. You have to go all the way down to the 7:00 PM time. And I'll go back into here. And we'll paste. And we'll save. There we go. And we'll go back into Zoom. Write it quick, you're deleting it? You reaching out to me? Yeah, I know, um, Crazy Love is going to be there in person. And she'll be recording it also. But she'll be there. And again, even if it's just you and I, or me by myself, this is just for recording purposes. Sorry, trying to type this up real quick. Yeah, I think that's what I want to talk about. Crazy day. I did not see the number before you deleted it. I saw that you said you were going to reach out to me. That's okay. I'm not really all that techy myself. Do you have my email address, Maine House? Okay. And you probably have answered this before and I apologize that I didn't, um, keep it in, in my little brain. You don't know how to send it. Um, it may not let you send it because it's a phone number and YouTube is just weird like that. So you might have to spell it out. But if you're trying to send me something, it may be easier to send it to me in an email. Cause YouTube usually doesn't let you put like a phone number in there. It is weird like that. No, I don't think you're stupid. You don't know how to email? Okay, two. Oh. Okay. I think I'm missing one number. Maine House, I think I'm the one that's really stupid on this. Hey Peter. I think I have it right, but I don't want to say it again because I know you don't want me to say it, but... Oh, excuse me, I screwed around. My biscuits are awfully sore. I think I'm gonna re-say something what I said a couple of weeks ago. Maine House, uh, email me. What I was gonna ask you though, Maine House, is what area of the world are you in? You probably have already told me that. And I don't remember. Okay, please do. That'll make it a little bit easier to communicate one-on-one. Ah, okay. Yep, nice, I'm up in Midwest, so we're on the same timezone. I wish you could just... Yep, hi Cece. Yep, Crazy will be at the meeting too. She's on her way there. We'll probably see her in the front row again. This is Crazy's neck of the woods. It's her responsibility. I know she's been really needing some more help on, on all the research and stuff that she's doing. Here, I gotta move this over here a little bit so I can get my whole body's just combobulated right now. Yeah, I wish you could do like call Amazon and say, "Hey, Amazon, I need a new body." Wouldn't that be nice? And you just ordered new, new legs, new eyes. New biscuits. That would be so nice. I know, she said she didn't like the front row last time. They, they can sit on the other side. I think Debbie probably will be there too, or... I'm trying to remember what her screen name is. I'm gonna take that off just for a second. Yeah, pretty kind of a slow day, but the LAPD Commission meeting was pretty jazzed this morning. Yeah, they are. They're, they're definitely working on the most current available tax returns. There's so many different uh, 501(c)(3)'s though that are involved with, and even the for-profit companies that are involved with Scientology that that it's pretty nutsy. Hey, you were gonna go down to the Blue, are you still on, gonna go down there? Is that still in the plans? Okay guys, it's time to start your meeting. Nope, they're starting. They've just turned the recording on. Yeah, that's okay, Cece. In your own time. Yeah, you had said that you were gonna go down in December and I was just curious if it was still in the plans. But it sounds like it's not and that's okay. Yep, Peter had a question about those, Cece.
All right, welcome to today's meeting. We're happy you are here, whether you're joining in person or online. We hope you'll continue to participate in whichever manner you feel the most comfortable. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you again for joining us. Before we move through the agenda, I want to go through registration information and our rules and standards for public meetings. We welcome everyone and the council's goal is to make the meetings a place where people feel safe and comfortable participating in their government. We invite everyone to help make this a welcoming space. A respectful and safe environment allows us to conduct the meeting in an orderly and efficient way. Our most basic rule is that any action that causes a disruption to our ability to conduct the meeting or any safety concern involving threats or unprotected speech are not allowed. These actions or comments may result in removal from the meeting. As a reminder of our public comment registration process, individuals may register to comment on scheduled public hearing items up until the hearing is closed. For the general comment section, we'll accept signups until 7:30 PM. The general comment section is limited to a maximum of one hour and will only include commenters who register before 7:30. So if you're here to give general comments, please sign up and remember that it is possible not everyone who signs up may be able to speak. This brings us to item A4, approving the work session minutes of August 27th, 2024, September 3rd, 2024, September 10th, 2024, September 17th, 24, and October 8th, 2024. I'll look for a motion. I have a motion from Councilmember Phee, a second from Councilmember Wharton, any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Uh, the motion passes.
So, uh, as the Vice Chair, um, I have the honor of, um, taking a moment to, uh, chair this meeting while, uh, we recognize Victoria Petrot for her service as the Salt Lake City Chair for, uh, 2024. Just switching over to my prepared remarks. So, even though it's been a pretty quiet year here at City Hall, um, of course, I'm kidding, um, and it was anything but a quiet year. Um, it seems like every year we marvel at how busy, uh, we are and, um, how much additional things we have to do. And in fact, this year, we spearheaded, as you often remind us, generational projects and discussions that will change the literal landscape of the city for decades to come. Victoria, over this monumentous year, we've been fortunate to have you as Chair. You've led with courage, uh, diving in with passion and, and your interest to be, um, so thorough and so diligent and to be a champion for all Salt Lake City residents. You articulated critical issues and you charted a path of resilience for all of us. Thank you for the work, um, and even a few tough moments that we had, um, but we worked through together. Um, and we all had something valuable to learn and we kept moving forward together as a council. And this is the moment where I'd like us to sing, um, our karaoke song, um, from the, from the musical Wicked.
We sang it before it was a movie, we're, we're OGs.
Cue the music. No, just kidding, we're not gonna do that. That would be really rude to make people sit through me singing, um. So tonight, we celebrate you and all you've given of yourself to fulfill the role as Chair. As a token of our appreciation, we present you with a shadow box filled with memories that capture your remarkable year of leadership. Okay. So first, we have a council baseball team jersey honoring your dedication to Rose Park and the Power District, um, MLB development with the names of colleagues and staff representing, uh, the teamwork and support. Next, an inaugural Utah Hockey Club ticket and Utah Jazz memorabilia to celebrate your role in elevating Salt Lake City as a vibrant sports hub. Um, to recognize your steadfast commitment to our veterans, there's a Veterans Day Challenge Coin, symbolizing the respect and gratitude you consistently champion for those, uh, who gave, uh, dedicated their lives to service. We've included a replica of the Salt Lake City International Airport's The Peaks Art Installation, which represents your district's innovation and beauty. And finally, a West Side is the Best Side Bandana with a miniature version of your puppy, Cannoli. Um, and it adds a playful nod of positive energy that you bring to the council. So, thank you for leading our city council team with vision, passion, and grit in the past year. Much like the West Side, you've been bold, dynamic, and full of heart, a true MVP for our city. Here's to celebrating you. Much like the West Side, you've been bold, dynamic, and full of heart, a true MVP for our city. Here's to celebrating you.
Everybody say cheers. Oh, girlfriends, you're fine. Hopefully, this is going to be a quick meeting tonight.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
May I add some comments to the?
Sure.
I just wanted to thank you, I guess, in the on the record. I mean, we we talk and and I I thank you for your leadership and friendship and and passion about the the issues that we face. And often, maybe I should do it more often. But I I just want to make sure that you you know that your heart and passion about the issues have motivated me and to do more and to be better. And challenge me and my own emotions and my own frustrations and my own and sometimes anger. And thank you for for leading this council and through one of the most challenging and at the same time, great times and probably in our recent history. I, well, you know, going through things that that beg sometimes create tensions. I think those tensions were good tensions that got us to where we are today. So I I'm honored to serve on this council with you. I am looking forward for for more time together. And for your passion to continue, even though, even though that you may not be in leadership. Who knows, right? But if you're in leadership, and I know that you will serve your community and the city as a whole. And you put your, because you put your heart into everything, you cannot help yourself. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. It's been an honor to serve with each of you. Like, we truly are an assortment of varied and complimentary skills. I would never care about, you know, where periods and commas are placed, if not for Chris. And I would never dream to ask for the things environmentally if Dan didn't challenge me and and push me in the North Coin area. Darren, you made me care about zoning and planning and like I like care about a zoning consolidation now. Ava has kept me being audacious, which I know there's a lot of people who wish I were less. So Ava, I now officially consider you my co-conspirator. Sarah, your knowledge of systems and the ability to diplomatically respect everyone but push assertively for what I know I need has shaped me irrevocably. And Alejandro, you are encouragement to me, not only professionally, you have the most strategic mind I've ever met. But you also care so deeply about the things that you care for and employ your gifts. And I love that you and I get to represent the West Side together. Thank you. It's been a year. Like, we lived a decade this year. We started off with protesters who not only challenged us on the issue, but dehumanized us every night. And we remembered each other's humanity, and we remember just because it's said into a microphone doesn't make it true. And we centered the best interest of Salt Lakers as we faced tax increase opportunities, as we faced how to overcome state preemption. We made monumental progress in things that protect our local environment. I just thank you. Being alongside you has been amazing, and while I'm really looking forward to not being in leadership, it's been one of the most rewarding experiences of my life. And I know all of us would absolutely agree that without our incredible staff, and by the way, we're the council, that saw Cindy Gus Jensen finally sit down. And I don't know if that's an accomplishment or a tragedy for us. But we've weathered storms together, and our staff are still the most remarkable humans I know. Nick Johnson, I don't know how you transitioned into being a liaison while I was in leadership, but thank you. I'm excited for what we do next. All right. And with that, I'm gonna change the love fest over. And I would like to move on to item A six, which is I want us to consider adopting a joint ceremonial resolution with Mayor Mendenhall, recognizing the contributions that Cindy City Attorney Catherine Lewis has made to Salt Lake City. Katie, in this, we have Catherine Lewis written as all the whereas's, but can I call you Katie? It feels weird and disingenuous. Okay. Whereas Katie Lewis, the City Attorney for Salt Lake City, has consistently demonstrated exceptional leadership, policy expertise, and creative problem-solving skills. And whereas Katie Lewis's guidance was invaluable in navigating unprecedented challenges, including the COVID nineteen pandemic, a major earthquake, a devastating windstorm, and an historic period of demonstrations calling for police reform. And whereas Katie Lewis's strategic legal counsel played a critical role in the successful recovery of the city through these tumultuous times. And whereas Katie Lewis exhibited outstanding leadership in complex negotiations for transformative powers, projects of generational importance, such as the inland port, downtown sports and entertainment district, and the Fair Park and Power District developments. And whereas Katie Lewis's thorough research, masterful negotiation skills, and steadfast commitment to integrity and transparency secured lasting benefits for future generations of Salt Lakers. And whereas Katie Lewis's ability to resolve disputes professionally and diplomatically has been instrumental in maintaining positive relationships with elected officials, staff, and community members. And whereas Katie Lewis's unwavering commitment to public service and integrity has earned the respect and trust of all who have had the privilege of working with her. And whereas Katie Lewis has consistently demonstrated a deepening of municipal law, budgeting, land use, and city governance, which allowed her to contribute greatly to the well-being of the city of Salt Lake. And whereas Katie Lewis's strategic thinking and attention to detail have significantly shaped the future of our city. And whereas, as a mentor and leader, Katie Lewis has inspired and empowered countless individuals within the city government. And whereas Katie Lewis's positive attitude and optimistic outlook have fostered a collaborative and productive work environment among colleagues and staff alike. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Salt Lake City Council and Mayor of Salt Lake City express our deepest gratitude and appreciation for Katie Lewis for her unwavering dedication, hard work, and invaluable contributions to Salt Lake City. And be it further resolved that the legacy of Katie Lewis's tenure as City Attorney will be felt for many years to come, and her contributions to the city will always be remembered with admiration and respect. I'll look for a motion.
Sorry.
Move that we approve the joint resolution appreciating Katie Lewis for service to Salt Lake City.
Second. Got a motion from Councilmember Dugan. I think we have, technically, we'll say Lopez Chavez, but there's all of us have seconded it. We'll say that. There's going to be significant discussion on this. So let's start. I'm District Seven, Councilwoman Young.
So I think the one thing that gives me the most, I guess, hope in looking forward is knowing the foundations you laid for us as a city. You truly were so instrumental in making sure that Salt Lake is prepared for the future. And I see our future in the front row. And I know that your time with them is going to be even more invaluable than the amazing gift you've given us here at the city. So thank you.
Councilmember Dugan.
Yes. Everything Councilwoman Young just said. Ever since I've been in the council, you've been the City Attorney. And you've always been there. Thorough. You gave us straight answers. You knew the picture. You could see all perspectives. You're compassionate. But you're also stern and hard. And that shows your leadership skills. And as Councilwoman Young said, you set us up for success. And we so appreciate everything you did. And the full passion behind it. And we, I just look forward to seeing great things from your next position. And I know you're gonna do, you're gonna kick some butt. So thank you for everything you've done, and thank you for showing us how to do it.
Councilmember Mono.
I was trying to think back at the first time I met you, and I think it was before you were the City Attorney and before I was a council member, you gave me an open and public meetings training as a member of the Redevelopment Advisory Committee. And I remember thinking, what, like, just being so shocked that of all these new things that municipal government had to deal with and. But as I think through all the other interactions I've had with you since you've led the city and us as a council through some of the most important things that we've done, but you've also shown the same level of of passion and compassion and and leadership in things that really maybe weren't as important, but they felt important to some of us. And I remember a couple of things that were very personal to me and hard things that you drew in throughout. I appreciate that. I know that. I I think you just have a really good poker face, but your ability to make me feel like my issues mattered to you in midst of all of the other things that I know you had on your plate was was appreciated and and not missed. So thank you.
Councilwoman Lopez Chavez.
Thank you. Katie, you were the first person to take my heart and calm it when I entered City Hall. But more than that, you've been a steadfast beacon and pillar of all things just in the city. And there is absolutely no one that knows the city more acutely than you do in your legal performance, but also in your moral values. And you have truly left your mark on the city. You are an inspiration, and I cannot wait to see your children grow up. And I cannot wait to hear about all your ski runs. And I cannot wait to see how you'll change this world. Thank you for your service, Katie, and thank you for being a friend.
Councilmember Wharton.
Come on, man. So several years ago, when you were sitting for your advice and consent interview, I was thinking about how you were a third-year law student when I started law school. And that that's when I first met you. And I asked you if you ever thought back then that you'd be sitting in front of the council for the, as the as the nominee for the City Attorney position. And even more surprisingly, that I would be on the council interviewing you. And it felt like that was just a moment ago and at the same time, ages ago. And now that we're saying, you know, goodbye for you in this position, it feels even more unbelievable than than that surreal experience that we had several years ago. And it's hard for me to find the words to thank you without reflecting on the role of the City Attorney in our system of government. And as the City Attorney, you represent Salt Lake as an entity, which requires you to represent each one of us and the mayor in our capacities as the elective and elected legislative and executive leaders. And in representing us, you have represented the will of the people of Salt Lake City and their future public interests. And that is an incredible amount of responsibility. And it requires a level of professional and interpersonal skill that not every attorney possesses. It also requires a level of dedication that even fewer attorneys will ever know. I have the benefit of getting to see, seeing you work both from the client side as one of your clients and also as a fellow attorney in the practice of law. And Salt Lake City has been fortunate to have been very well represented by our city attorneys and their teams, so everybody else in the office. But even among all of them, you have been exceptional in terms of your integrity, your diligence, and your advocacy. During your tenure, we faced some of the biggest legal and existential challenges in the city's history, many of which were occurring simultaneously. And it's with all of that in mind and all of those experiences and all of those trials that I express my thanks for the immeasurable benefits that we have all gained from your council and your advice. And going forward in your new endeavor, I wish you every happiness. And we'll be rooting for you.
Councilmember Puy.
I I I was thinking what to say that didn't, you know, broke me completely in public. It's a bit embarrassing. And I, you know, and I was also thinking that this may be the first time I cry when an attorney leaves me. And I think that not many people could say that. And I I am just no many people will know the amount of ways, you know, late hours and headaches that, you know, that you put into this job. But we do know the way that you protected the city, our neighbors, you know, my neighbors, everybody here. To ensure that this city can function and deliver the services in an equitable way that ensure that our values and principles become a reality, even facing some of the greatest opposition out there. And I I am just incredibly thankful for you. And there are not really many words to say. But I thank you for, in behalf of every single resident of the city, there's two hundred and nine thousand five hundred and ninety-three residents in the city, and I want to thank you for each of them. And for those that stole you from us, they're lucky to have you. And one of the greatest minds I ever seen. Your ferocious legal defense and efficacy. I cannot wait what you will accomplish in the future. But if you ever want to come back.
Katie, I think my first interaction with you was you telling Cindy Gus Jensen not to talk to me about city things because it wasn't it wasn't legally certified yet that I was elected. Even from that first time you were looking out for the best interests of our constituents and the legal fidelity of our institutions. And I think what's so remarkable to me is that the breadth of the things that I watched you counsel on. I watched you help navigate when I came in hot on the port. And not only tell me where legal best practice was, where legal safety was, but also where prudence was. What my options were within an array of, you know, we'd like to pretend like the law is black and white, but there's a lot of flex. And there's a lot of ways to get in trouble while staying legal. And being able to rely on you to bounce ideas off of when I would get frustrated because the thing I was wanting to change was systemic. And it wasn't real possible to do it in one ordinance at a time. You know, knowing that you heard me and my voice and my heart, and you saw my frustration and understood the frustrations that are limitations of the law, but still flexed within the humanity. That you helped us walk through a code of conduct. Seven people who have very different ideas of what risk is appropriate and helped us find common ground, and then further counseled us on things like the travel policy and made sure that we, as an institution, can elevate our expectations of those who come to do business before us and with us because we hold a standard of excellence. before us and with us because we hold a standard of excellence. And every time you offered counsel, it wasn't because you thought or you knew better. It was because in your assessment of what's best for the city, what's best for the constituents. I know that you hate the inequities that formerly redlined communities experience as much as I do. And I don't know that many people as closely tied to institutions like the law ever can hold that passion with the knowledge that they have to also hold. You're a unique, unique person. I hope this means we can be friends now because your professional boundaries are real great. And, you know, as we pointed out, we were pregnant at all the same time, so we could have really fun playdates now. But I'm so thankful that you helped shape these years. That whether it's how we navigate together as a body and one voice or whether it's how we accept in people who are going to do business with us and for us, I'm so thankful and will be forever changed because I knew you. I have been changed for good. So we'll sing our duet now. So, thank you. I'd like to recognize the mayor now.
Oh, dear Katie. I think we started the city about the same time, 11 years ago. And I, I've known you a long time and I've seen you in many circumstances. And I've never seen you without grace and the utmost professionalism. And in 2018, when Chris Worten and I were chairing the city council and the city needed representation in the negotiations with the state around the inland port, it was you that we took into those negotiations. And when heat in the conversation rises, whether it's a conversation between us or between a negotiation with a third party, you are always the voice that brings us back to productivity. And so when I became the mayor, I knew I wanted you to be the city attorney. And I'm so grateful you said yes. And my confidence in you was reflected in the city council through their advice and consent and the enthusiasm. And I think it was incredible support that we don't always have in those moments of advice and consent because that's who you are and the relationship that you've proven to us. It's true that we have seen unprecedented times, not only of challenges against the city, but of times where our own legal intellect was called into action. And without that, we couldn't have protected the city from things that we never saw coming in January of 2020. And I'm talking also about the 16 emergency orders that you and I executed during the pandemic. Most mayors never sign one. We did 16. And I'll finish by telling a story that after one of those, the state leader called me and said, you can't do that. You legally can't do that. I said, well, here's what our legal understanding is. And our attorney, our city attorney believes that we actually stand on firm legal ground. He said, you can't. I said, well, why don't we get your attorney at the state?
I'll definitely continue with Great Wells rehearse.
And let them talk about it. And he called me back about 36 hours later and he said, you have a very good city attorney. And our emergency order stood. And I don't, I just, I bring that story up not to bash on the state at all. There's always a tension and a healthy conflict there. But to say that at times when our people in the city needed protection, you found a way. You found a way on solid legal ground. Thank you for teaching me. I hope someday to be half as good a negotiator as you are. And the city would be, we would be behooved to carve your face as one of the the faces on the stone, on the facade of this building. Because we have been permanently improved by the work that you've given to the city. You're an incredible public servant. And the Sierra Club is lucky and our environment's lucky to have you come as their senior counsel. I'm so proud of you.
Uh oh, did we freeze? By the way, if anybody has.
Madam Chair, may I say a few words if I can get through it? Thank you for this honor tonight. It's unexpected and I'm deeply grateful. In this season of giving, I've been thinking a lot about gifts, both given and received in my time when I've been in this, working at the city. And I wanted to acknowledge a few. First, to my family. Thank you for the gift of being the joy of my life. I've worked at the city for 11 years. And when I started, I only had a three-year-old son named Henry, who is now 14 and is at basketball practice, not here watching his mother, which that's probably as it should be. But in the time that I'm here, we had our two beloved daughters who are here, Millie, who's nine, and Mary Louise, who's seven. And I'm so grateful for the love and the light that they bring. And I'm so grateful to Mike, my husband. We've been together for a long time and married for almost 20 years. And you're my rock in highs and lows. So thank you. And to the mayor, thank you for the gift of believing in me and appointing me as your city attorney in 2020. Your gift, your belief that I could do this enormous job and serve the city is the greatest gift that anyone has given me professionally. And I want you to know that I believe in you too. I do today, I did then. And I believe in the team of dedicated leaders that you've assembled. Rachel, Jill, Megan, Lindsay, and all of the department directors. We are here because of your extraordinary belief in us and we would follow you anywhere. And to the city council, some of whom I've known for my entire 11 years at the city and some who I have only recently gotten to know. Thank you for the gift of your trust. Through the hard times and the delightful times, you have trusted me to advise you and support your extraordinary vision for the city. And I trust you. Your protection of our most vulnerable, your integrity, the way you process hard decisions and get to the right one. You care for our city and you care for all of us. And your staff, Jen, Cindy, Lehuah, Nick, and all the others. I would trust you all with my life. In the late nights, in the complicated negotiations, you are brilliant and you are powerful. Thank you for the gift of trust. And to my leadership team, Mark Cotrell, Cindy Lou Trishman, and Angela Price. Thank you for the gift of vulnerability. I am so grateful to have served all of you. And I love watching you grow into your unbounded leadership potential. One of the great unexpected delights of moving on from this role is that I've been able to step back from my leadership role and put my hands on their backs and support them in their leadership journey. Mark, Cindy Lou, Angela, you are ready. Thank you for the gift of your vulnerability as you step into this leadership. And to the team at the city attorney's office, many of you are here tonight. I want to thank you all for your gift of grace. I became the city attorney in January 2020. And by March, as the mayor mentioned, February, actually, we were in lockdown for COVID. We had endured an earthquake. By May, we had an unprecedented civil unrest. And in September, we had an inland hurricane. Thank you for your grace as I learned how to serve you. And thank you for your forgiveness of the mistakes that I made along the way. You always held me up and you continue to be the best and the brightest that I know. You are so smart, so creative, and so dedicated, and Salt Lake City is lucky to have you. Learning from you and receiving grace from you was an extraordinary gift. And I want to thank the residents of Salt Lake for, many of you don't know me, but I believe in you and I believe in this city and I love it so much. And I will continue to support it in my own way as a resident and a constituent. And thank you for the time that we have spent together. It's the greatest gift of my life. Thank you.
Where are you going, crazy?
Katie? Katie, we'd like to present you this wooden bowl. It's handcrafted by Paul Russell, an artist from Linden, Utah. He used elm wood from the fallen trees in that historic 2020 windstorm to make it. It's carved and shaped from the beautiful trees and it seemed like the perfect gift for you. It's a symbol of the important work in your future and the beauty and the strength that you offer to us here. So we'd like to.
Now get you out so that way we can, oh, got to take a picture. Okay, everybody, cheese. Hugs. Oh, here we go with the cheese. Wood bowls for the public interest, ugh. Do you guys not see me? Minnie? I'm still here. Oh, with, with crazy.
Okay, council, I have a motion and a second. We still have to vote to approve. That was the longest discussion period ever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously, like the entire city unanimously, not just the council unanimously. All right. This now brings us to the public hearings section, and we have no scheduled public hearings, which then takes us to item C1, a potential action item for the Title 19 text amendments. I'll look for a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the council adopt the ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Pui and a second from Dugan. Any discussion?
Title 18.
Yes, sir, Title 18.
Yes, I withdraw my motion.
Thank you. I would like to move that we approve the ordinance and the changes to Title 18, building code.
This is the most symbolic council meeting ever. Dugan, does your second still stand?
Yes, my second stands.
I have a motion from Councilmember Horton and a second from Dugan. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Item C2 is an ordinance for the budget amendment number two for fiscal year 2425. I'll look for a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the council adopt an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2025 final budget.
I have a motion. Do you need to say something else, Councilmember Dugan?
Do I need to finish reading this?
There's a whole bunch left.
Got a lot of bunch left. Is that okay?
You good?
I'm looking at Cindy Lou. Yes.
No, should read it.
I think it might help to read the whole motion, just so we're clear.
I move that the council adopt an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2025 final budget of Salt Lake City, including the employment, staffing, and documents only for items as shown on the motion sheet. I further move that the council adopt a legislative intent statement requesting the administration provide a written report to the council evaluating the management, budget, policy oversight, and other considerations for the city prosecutor's office structure and operations and the existing interlocal agreement model versus alternative models, including bringing the function back into the city attorney's office.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Dugan and a second from Councilmember Mono. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Our final potential action item is item C3, an ordinance for the Jordan River Fair Park District zoning map and text amendment. I'll look for a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move that the council adopt an ordinance establishing the Jordan River Fair Park zoning district and rezone 93 acres of approximately 1,500 West North Temple to the JRF zoning district. I further move that the council request that the administration enter into a development agreement with the applicant as outlined in attachment A in the agenda item. I further move that the council request an annual audit review of the project area that can be posted in the city website outlining the cost of city services provided to UFAIR district and revenue and property and sales tax diverted to the district. So the public can be made aware of how those, how those funds are being used.
I have a motion from Councilmember Pui and I have a second from Councilmember Dugan. Any discussion on the matter? Councilmember Horton?
Yes, just briefly, the two of you spoke about the work that's gone into this at our last meeting. And I just wanted to, as a council member that represents a very small piece of the West Side, I want to thank both of you for the immense amount of work that you did and, and helped lead us in these discussions. And that, I think that, I hope that the residents will see of the West Side and of the whole city just how much we place their interests at the forefront of our negotiations and our deliberations and, and all of our efforts here. And I think that this represents a historic opportunity for those residents. And I, I hope that we can live up to that. And I think that we can with this, with this agreement that we have. And so I'm excited to see that future come to realization starting now.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilmember Pui?
Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity. I, I want to, you know, highlight something that you mentioned earlier today about, you know, that sometimes we go through processes that are uncharted and new and sometimes difficult. And, but we, we stay at the table. And, and, you know, the importance of staying at the table means for my residents that we have a say and that we keep their values and interests at forefront. That no matter how hard sometimes things are, that we move forward and we join hands into pushing ahead. And I'm thankful for the many of you that have spent so much, so much time and, and effort in ensuring this agreement becomes a partnership. A partnership that will benefit not only the applicant, but also the community as a whole. And I am thankful that we have found an agreement. And while the bill set up the tables in a. And while the bill set up the tables in a, in a, in a strange place, we are here together to sign an agreement and to hopefully welcome a baseball team to Salt Lake City. And I will be joyful to see that happen. I also will be pushing ahead to ensure that our city does our part like we always try and we improve upon ourselves. But we also ensure that all the parties in this agreement fulfill their vision and their commitment. I am thankful for, for being here right now and this opportunity. And I'm looking forward to what we can accomplish together. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Councilmember? I think, I want to say, when I ran for office, I'm someone who chose the West Side. I'm not someone who generationally grew up there. But I literally had traveled, I've never lived anyplace more than like five or six years. And this is where the roots grew. And so I've known that it's going to be a large thing that helps take away historical red line stigma. It's going to be something momentous that helps us overcome the history that put us at a deficit. I don't think I recognized the fear I would have at my ability to discern where the best is to accomplish that. And in so many ways, I look at this deal and arrangement and I go, of course, it's going to take something this big with a company with this history and this capability to do it. And still I go, am I doing it right? And I have to say that we truly have, as a city, under the leadership of Katie, who we just praised. So I don't have to do a whole lot more to make it clear. But then also we have Rachel and Jen completing out this trinity of insight that helped keep us oriented towards a true north. While, by the way, there's a lot of competing priorities. We have homelessness barreling down on us. We have mandates and everything coming at us. And in the thick of it, we found our way to something really good. I want to acknowledge that you all could have waited till December 31st. You could have just let a complete preemption pass. And, and I want to acknowledge that and put it on the record. I am thankful to you for coming, for letting me boldly ask, for letting me boldly repeatedly ask. I want to thank you for taking weekends and evenings and mornings and times where you should have been doing other things and giving attention to this. And I want to acknowledge openly that we are the beneficiaries of grace in that way. And my commitment to you is that I will reciprocate that grace with the best efforts as long as I'm in this to make it good for the constituents first and the parties to this agreement secondarily. If the constituents are taken care of, we will all be taken care of. Thank you. I acknowledge you. Thank you for the ways you've already shown up for my community and the ways you will continue to. I am deeply appreciative to you.
Sure.
And I want to thank us for seeing a pathway through. It's really easy to look at preemptions and authorities and go, well, it's just what it's going to be. And we still found the boldness to ask to go to the table. That's an act of faith as much as it is of courage. Mayor, I have never seen a meeting as skillfully executed as I saw you execute the one on November 27th. All my days, I will endeavor to emulate that perfection. But also I appreciate you joining me, even when we had other tensions and other places because our city is growing and the world is so big for us right now. I appreciate you for meeting me there. I am really proud of what we've done, even though I'm still nervous for those spaces where we're going to have to relinquish control. It still is a state preemption and we still don't have a strategy for dealing with that. Well, none of the, none of the cities dealing with preemptions have a strategy for it. We're all stumbling through this together. But I do think this one is set up for success. And can I please, please, please be at the game where the Yankees come? I don't know whose hat I'm going to be wearing, but I'm going to be happy to be there in that stadium with you all.
Councilwoman Lopez Chavez.
Thank you. I just really quickly wanted to recognize some concerns that were voiced to me. Thanks to some clarifications, I just wanted to recognize again, the process of this rezone and text amendment won't change our public notification process. We'll continue to legally publish public notices as needed and required and that our city continues to be responsible and create tools to overcome displacement. This is a concern I hear. I just want to recognize again, this is fallow land that we're amending. So no individuals will be displaced and we have great tools in our city apparatus and expanding these toolsets so our residents can overcome these challenges. And again, I just want to recognize, I'll be voting in support of this and I'm very thankful for LHM for partnering with us to create this district. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, then I will call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? It is unanimous.
Thank God.
Thank you. This now brings us to the questions for the mayor section. Mayor Rachel, thank you for being here. The rest of the mayor's staff. I, I don't know what other questions we could ask her that we have not asked her in the past 72 hours, but council, any questions for the mayor? All right, you're off the hook. All right, we're now at the general comment portion of our agenda. This is for the public to comment on any city business not scheduled for a public hearing. This section is limited to a maximum of one hour and to only those individuals who register to speak before 7:30. Our meeting rules apply to these general comments. Please avoid disruptions or threats, or we will ask a staff member to assist you out of the meeting. Also, as a reminder, comments that include profanity, personal attacks, intimidation, or discriminatory language are not persuasive or compelling. They are not helpful to create the respectful and safe environment we want to create. To sign up for to comment, please register online or turn in a comment card to in-person staff. We accept signups until 7:30. We'll be calling your names in the order of signups. If you're on Zoom, please unmute your mic when your name is called. Each person will have two minutes. Please raise your hand in the room or on Zoom for staff assistance. If you're having technical issues in Zoom, our staff member Ellie Tran can assist you. To help make sure that as many people as possible can speak during the hour, anyone in person should feel free to come up and stand in line when you hear your name called. Please also avoid interruptions so that we can use the time for as many people to comment as possible. If you reach the two-minute mark, the host will announce time and your microphone will be muted. If you are unable to finish your comment, please share the rest via email, mail, or call our office. Contact information is listed at slccouncil.com. If you have a handout for the council, please notify council staff who will assist you. Taylor, please begin with our first comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have about 18 people registered to speak to general comment. The first will be Oswaldo Ponse De Leonlenda, followed by Taylor Larson, and then Andrew Marwick. Oswaldo is here in person.
Hi, council. My name is Oswaldo. I'm a resident of District Four. Thank you for taking time to listen to us tonight. Before I begin, I'd like to thank Councilmember Lopez Chavez for taking time to speak with me after last week's council meeting. And I also want to thank her for her recent public statement of support for Salt Lake City's immigrant community. I am here once again to urge the city council to stand in support of our undocumented community members and take actions to protect them during the, this time of heightened threats to their safety and well-being. As an immigrant myself and someone who has undocumented family members and loved ones, this is a personal issue to me. I have three requests for the city council. First one, make a public statement of support. Please issue a formal statement denouncing Governor Cox's intentions to support the Trump administration's deportation plan. This partnership with harmful federal policies puts vulnerable individuals and families in our community at greater risk. It undermines the values of compassion and inclusivity the Salt Lake City strives to uphold. Number two, ensure non-cooperation with federal immigration agents. The council mayor needs to ensure that the Salt Lake City Police Department does not cooperate with federal immigration enforcement. Law enforcement should focus on protecting all residents, not protecting, not participating, sorry, in deportation operations. And third, allocate city resources to protect undocumented community. I urge the city council to explore and implement ways the city can use its authority and resources to protect undocumented residents. This might include establishing a legal defense fund or offering direct aid to those impacted by federal immigration actions. Salt Lake City has an opportunity to set an example of leadership by showing that it values all its residents, regardless of immigration status. Our undocumented neighbors are integral to our community. They are our coworkers, our friends and family members. And I hope the city council will take some action on this.
Obnoxious.
Next will be Taylor Larson, followed by Andrew Marwick, and then Oscar Arvisu. Taylor is here in person.
Howdy, council. I just want to, I'm not sure where we're at with the Green Loop, but I want to advocate that we, or that you all keep looking into starting it on the East Side and pushing west. I'm with the Rio Grande Plan and we're really excited about developments there with RDA land, the UTA headquarters. And so waiting for that area to continue to develop, we think would be really prudent. Thanks.
Next will be Andrew Marwick, followed by Oscar Arvisu, and then Mona M. Andrew, you may now unmute.
Yes, thank you. The, as the previous speaker said, the Rio Grande Plan has a lot of potential. As you discussed earlier this evening, the Power District and the baseball has a lot of potential. Unfortunately, Salt Lake City has made a huge commitment to the Smith Entertainment Group, basically a billion dollars through a half-cent sales tax increase. And that is going to absorb a huge percentage of potential revenue that could go towards these other projects and really prepare Salt Lake City for the 2034 Olympics, when the world's attention will be focused on Salt Lake City. This plan has been very short-sighted. The amount of land available for development, what has to be torn down of the convention center, it just isn't working. It will not work. The Gateway Mall, the pharmaceutical company that occupies a big portion of it is not retail. It's only maybe 30, 40% occupied by retail around the gateway. Downtown needs to focus westward towards the Rio Grande Plan. In terms of this hockey team, this hockey team came close to bankrupting the city of Glendale, Arizona. 10, 12 years ago, the city of Glendale was looking at selling off a library. They were not maintaining their property. They will be demolishing their downtown library in Glendale, Arizona. They basically had to completely rebuild the city hall complex largely due to neglected maintenance. That hockey team was a major disaster for the city of Glendale, Arizona. I hope you look at what happened in Glendale and maybe contact some of the officials there. But I think in a few years, I will come back and tell you that this was a big mistake and you're not prepared for the 2034 Olympics. You're ruining your chance to getting Major League Baseball by focusing so much on NHL hockey. Thank you.
Next will be Oscar Arvisu, followed by Mona M., and then Jay Larson. Oscar, you may now unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm excited about the progress with the ballpark ideas. But after watching the presentation today of the three possible scenarios, I was left a little bit underwhelmed. While I understand the designs are still evolving, many of the layouts lacked the green space I had envisioned. Instead, most concepts seemed dominated by boxy buildings that felt cramped and uninspiring. I'd hate to see the ballpark neighborhood follow the path of Sugar House with towering generic apartments that block sunlight and offer little visual appeal. Salt Lake City has a unique opportunity here to create something truly inspiring, something that serves the community and draws visitors alike. I'm especially drawn to the idea of incorporating the natural springs or creeks already beneath the site. Imagine a design, an organic, with an organic layout where the green spaces take priority and the buildings complement rather than, rather than dominate the landscape. Structures could frame the breathtaking mountain views and reflect their beauty, much like the developments named The Mountain in Copenhagen or 1,000 Trees in Shanghai or 79 and Park in Stockholm. Please look at these up and, and take inspiration. These examples can be, can be, show that it can be done. And as a proud Uton, I believe we deserve better than, than more uninspired cookie cutter builds. Lastly, I urge you to prioritize owner-occupied units in any development to faster, to foster the sense of community and investment in the neighborhood's future. And thank you for your time.
Next will be Mona M., followed by Jay Larson, and then Chanelle Hill. Mona, you may now unmute.
I am looking for the unmute. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, council members, for allowing me to speak. Information is imperative to making appropriate decisions in government. I would like to remind you that it is my responsibility to bring you relevant information, but your job as a governmental body to use the information to make sound judgments pertaining to the residents in Salt Lake City. The reason I and we keep apprising you of information about Scientology is not to demonstrate against the religion itself, but the abuses involved with its doctrine, policies, and practices. Scientology has KPIs for their members. It truly is more like an MLN than a church. For example, their legal team has a laundry list of stats they must adhere to each week. But I wanted to show you that, one, if there's a protester and the protester creates a sign showing negative attention about Scientology, they must regain their stats too full to make up for it. Or even the sales department must sell more courses to make amends. What appears to be as a business stat or KPI can also be an incitement of violence, especially when you pair it with two other quotes. "We would rather have you dead than incapable," and "Always attack, never defend." This organization is a wolf in sheep's clothing. So many people have forewarned about Epstein and P. Diddy. The horrific abuses could have been avoided. I am pleading with you to heed my words. Take caution. Thank you, and I yield back my time.
Next will be Jay Larson, followed by Chanelle Hill, and then Cameron Elwood. Jay is here in person.
I believe we, if we adults thought or became aware of bullying, we would do what we can to help or at least stand in solidarity against that, the bully. Likewise, if a city or a town were aware of another city of 10,000 or 20,000 being bullied by a huge corporation with at least $200 billion, our city would want to stand in solidarity against the bully. Folks, this bullying is happening to the town of Fairview, Texas. And the bully is the corporation of the president of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. The residents are happy and highly willing to have the corporation build a temple in their small town. However, the residents want to protect their, keep it country atmosphere and values. They want the church to abide by their zoning laws, yet the church is threatening the town with lawsuit threats. If the town does not allow the church to exceed the height and dark sky restrictions. The Brigham Act branch of Mormonism, aka the corporation, the richest church per capita in the world is threatening a lawsuit using federal law called Ralupa. And the federal law was written to protect religions, yet the corporation is using it not as a protection shield, but as a sword to get their way, regardless of who they cut down. The corporation met with the city to mediate, but still insists on 120-foot tower. The residents said last Tuesday in a city council, this is still to Ryanville, set the precedent. I call upon all city in the US to create a formal declaration for this. Thank you very much.
If you have more comments, we'll happily receive it in written form. We'll happily receive comments in written form if you didn't. Oh, we have them here. Thank you, sir.
And next will be Chanelle Hill, followed by Cameron Elwood, and then Mary Allison Sutinas. Chanelle is here in person.
Yep.
Hi, council. I'm here to speak on behalf of the vulnerable children who are being harmed under the protection of the tax-exempt status granted to the Church of Scientology. The issue is not just the nation, a national one. The issue is not just the nation, a national one, it's the impacts our own community here in Salt Lake City. The Church of Scientology has a significant presence, presence here in Salt, in Salt Lake City. And the tax-exempt status allows them to operate without the level of accountability and scrutiny that other organizations face. There are numerous reports of abuse, exploitation, particularly involving children with this organization. Because of its tax-exempt status, these abuses have been shielded from proper investigation. By removing their tax-exempt status, we can remove the shield of protection and allow law enforcement to step in. This will give local authorities and child protection agencies the ability to investigate and intervene, ensuring the safety of children in our community who may be at risk. Salt Lake City has the duty to protect its residents, especially its most vulnerable. I urge the city council to take a stand for the children who are being silenced and mistreated. Call on the IRS to remove the churches, the Church of Scientology's tax-exempt status so the local authorities can protect those who need it most. Thank you for your time for standing up for the children of Scientology.
Next will be Cameron Elwood, followed by Mary Allison Sutini, and then N. Canada. Cameron is here in person.
Good evening. My name is Cameron. It is common practice to blame another group to try to distract from the main issues at hand. We know that President Trump during his tenure about eight years ago at this point decided to blame immigrants in order to, in order to distract the general American public from the issues of class and wealth inequality here in the United States. And unfortunately, he is set to do so again. What disappoints me the most, however, is that Governor Cox is deciding to obey in advance this type of, this type of rhetoric and this type of honestly brutalization of people who have, who don't really even know what's going on in their lives. Two weeks ago, he said that he would be, that he, that he will be um, well in support with federal agents to come, to come in and just start targeting people at random. I call upon the city council to denounce Governor Cox's messages and his rhetoric about joining with the US military, sorry, not the US military, joining with the border, the immigration agents and rounding up these people. I call upon the city council to view this not as a, some sort of, view this not as a, some sort of like labor issue, but more of a humanitarian and a humanitarian and a moral issue. I call, I ask you guys to denounce, denounce and and refuse to comply with the, with the idea of bringing in federal agents to come in and do whatever work that they see fit. I ask that you instead um, divest and divest that money to actually helping these people, help them get a standing in their lives. A lot of them aren't here to be rapists. A lot of them are just here, just trying to seek a better life. It's our duty as American citizens to ensure that they can do that, not throw them out like they're some sort of parasite. Thank you.
Next will be Mary Allison Sutini, followed by N. Canada, and then Erin O'Farrell. Mary is here in person.
Hi, my name's Mary Allison. I live in District Three. Um, I also think it's important that city council as a whole officially responds to Governor Cox's statement made on November 26th announcing his plans to aid Trump's administration in escalating deportations. Governor Cox stated that the safety of Utah residents is his top priority. But having citizenship, visas, or a registered address in Utah should not be a prerequisite for safety in our state. Um, thank you, Councilmember Lopez Chavez, for publicly recognizing that Governor Cox's words are dangerous. Um, I'm sure more of you agree that Governor Cox's rhetoric and plans are also dangerous. But without an official statement, we as your constituents are left guessing who aligns with Governor Cox um, or who supports our undocumented uh, community members. In Utah. Um, we urge you to make sure Salt Lake City Police Department does not cooperate with federal immigration agents and also optimize the city's resources and power to protect our undocumented community members. That's all.
Next will be N. Canada, followed by Erin O'Farrell, and then Nathan McCallahan. And you may now unmute.
Hi, council. N. Canada here, D. Five. I want to bring attention to the risk our immigrant and undocumented communities face in the coming months. A Trump administration will have disastrous consequences, and we need to stand firm against it. Currently, only Ava has made a statement on the impending crisis. One common critique leveled against members of our community during the support, the demands for support of the Palestinian people, both domestic and abroad, was that city council jurisdiction was fixed to city ma- city matters. Sidebar, Victoria said today um, that I and others dehumanize city council and her almost a year later while Gaza is now all but rubble. Yet I am and others who also fought to defend innocent life still are here, building care in our community and interfacing with this body. Okay, back to the main point. Now we face another humanitarian crisis, and again, deafening silence from the majority of this body. Are we not going to defend our neighbors? Are we not going to stand against the injustice of first people fleeing countries destabilized by the US government and then throwing them out again? The country that was founded by Europeans who were assuredly not here legally, now our country has a different feeling when black and brown immigrants need a safe place. I ask this body to stand with our community members who are looking for a better life and fleeing the results of our country's mistakes. Stand against Cox and build a local movement to defend each other. First, it is the undocumented, then it is trans people, then it is women, and then, and then. Please stand firmly against hate before it is too late. Thank you.
Next will be Erin O'Farrell, followed by Nathan McCallahan, and then Stephanie Miller Tejada. Erin, you may now unmute.
I'm gonna go ahead.
Hello, my name
Leave the webinar because I doubt we're gonna have any other, because uh, crazy loves other person is not there. Okay, you guys. Well, that was good. One more meeting down. Tomorrow's a new day. Um, barring any issues, I will be doing my Good Morning Sunshines in the morning in a couple hours. So with that, I'm going to close out for the evening. Thanks for joining me tonight, Antix. Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Cece. Thank you, Peter. Anybody else who's on? Okay, loves you. Talk to you tomorrow.